Those minutes will be added at the hearing as evidence, so they need to be approved prior to that. So I'm just adding that following the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul, have you read this?
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have the minutes from Thursday night. As Paul and Kelly were there, Wendy, Dave, have you had an opportunity to review those at all? Or not? You don't have to vote on them if you don't want to. Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes of the site examination town highway ninety-five from Thursday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three?
So.
Do I hear your second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made to second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Dave and Wendy, you voted on those?
Aye.
Dave?
Yeah, well, I haven't looked at them, so I'm not sure. I'll just stay out. I didn't go to the site visit.
Okay. So one abstention. Next on the agenda is public hearing for highway ninety-five discontinuance. So I will open that hearing, and the first thing I'm going to do is read the warning, the notice of the public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of nineteen VSA, section seven oh nine, the Select Board of the Town of Weathersfield, Vermont, will hold a public hearing on Monday, July the seventeenth at six thirty PM to hear comments on the discontinuance of highway ninety-five in Weathersfield, Vermont. The hearing will be held at Martin Memorial Hall, fifty-two fifty-nine, U.S. Route five, Scottsdale, Vermont, oh-five oh-three-oh. The Select Board will examine the premises on Thursday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM to become familiar with highway ninety-five prior to the public hearing. The site examination will be held at three-eight-one East Cook Pond Road, Weathersfield, Vermont, oh-five-one-five-six. Anyone wishing to attend is warned to be present on either of these dates at the above-mentioned locations. Statement of purpose: The Select Board received a request from a resident in the town to discontinue highway ninety-five, which extends into their property. The road is currently classified as U, that's uppercase and quotation, or impassable or untraveled, also in quotation. On the twenty-fifteen Vermont general highway map of the Town of Weathersfield and the nineteen-eighty Town of Weathersfield highway map, the complaint states that mapping companies are mislabeling his driveway, identifying it as a highway, number ninety-five. The complaint further states that the right-of-way is located on Cook's Pond Road and is in easterly direction across their property and dead ends after a quarter of a mile. The complaint would like, the complainant would like this road to be discontinued. Geographical areas affected: Three-eighty-one East Cook's Pond Road, Weathersfield, Vermont, oh-five-one-five-six. Persons wishing to be heard may do so in person, be represented by an agent, or may file written comments with the Select Board prior to the hearing dated at Weathersfield, Windsor County, State of Vermont, this fifth day of June, twenty twenty-three, signed by me, the Chair, the Weathersfield Select Board Chair. With that, I would like to identify any interested persons and abutters that would like to participate in the hearing. John, you're the complainant, so you're automatic. The Blums?
The butters.
Okay. Ken, and I'm sorry, Ken, what's your son's name?
Jonah.
Jonah? DeForest, are you part of this? No? I'm sorry, are you? Ray, for the Town of Weathersfield?
Sure.
Brandon, for the Town of Weathersfield?
Yes.
And the rest of us up here are judges. So first, the first order of business with that is all persons that just said yes. You do solemnly swear that any testimony given in this hearing is the truth under penalties and perjury, so help you God. Yes? 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 And, yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay, that gets that out of the way. So I guess now to start, I've already read the statement of purpose, which is the complainant's request. John, is there anything you'd like to add to the statement that I just read? No? Mr. Ford?
I didn't catch any of those words, but is this scheduled for three hearings, or can this hearing be closed tonight and the decision made, or how does that work?
That's a good question. Do you know the answer to that, Brandon? Ray?
The statute says you have to have three hearings.
Three, so basically like three readings?
Right.
So if it says three hearings, does that mean that we keep the hearing open and continue it, or do we close it and reopen it?
Unfortunately, I just read the thing that said you have to have three hearings.
We're going to need to know that, Brandon, because that's a cost. If we can keep it open through, DeForest, do you know?
I do not.
The state law states three hearings, which means there's three separate hearings.
Which means you have to warn each one?
Yes, it all has to be warned.
Okay, so that answers.
I don't agree with that. I think it's a continuation that you warn it, which gives up, I think, I think you should probably allow for two or three weeks in between this hearing to give opportunity for people to be able to know about it, comment on it, but I don't think it's three separate hearings. It is a hearing to, in this case, to discontinue a road. It's no different than going from a class three to four or four to three. We don't warn all separate hearings for that either. I'm pretty confident that the hearing is open, I think, but, well, I don't know.
I think just the case should keep it open and not warn another reading.
Well, we can move on with the hearing procedure, and Brandon can look that up and see what he comes up with in the meantime.
The lawyers will be giving by their names. Where does it say that it may need three separate hearings?
It says, eighteen nineteen, I believe, after seven, I believe.
I don't see that here.
So the site visit on, where did my site visit notes go? Right here. So the site visit was, occurred on Thursday. Ray, you want to walk us through the site visit? Please?
Sure. We all, we met the folks over there at Cook's Pond Road, that's the location that was described in the maps that we've received, gotten from the State of Vermont and the vault upstairs. We found near the location of twenty-four eight miles from the road, within fifty feet of where a maritime truck was our way into a pasture, and there was no other evidence seen on the road into the field or across the pasture, and the people present had made the decision not to walk a quarter mile across the fields to inspect it further if you see what they saw. I don't know what else to add. All right. Subcourt's in the minutes.
Mike, I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
I think we could speed this up. I wasn't at the site visit, but I did skim some of these notes. So if you go to the deed page, I don't know where, it's a hundred and twenty-seven up on the top corner here, you've got to skim down a little bit. It's like an old typewriter printed thing, and it says regarding a change of a highway or, and it, I think it identifies this highway as this different number at this particular stage, I don't know why, highway forty-eight. But if you go to the very last, before the signatures of the selectmen at the time in nineteen sixty-two, the second paragraph up from the end, it says therefore it is the decision of the selectmen to rewarn this section of the highway and have it reconsidered for discontinuation. Somebody took this up in nineteen sixty-two, I think. Am I misreading something?
That was a deed represented of what the process was, because it was asked what the process was, so John Keston provided a deed from the area that walked through the process and showed what had happened. Highway forty-eight has nothing to do with this at all.
Okay.
So it's just an example of what happened in the deed and how the town did it.
Sorry.
John, you still want the floor?
I'm interested.
Okay.
So I've got another question now. I just want to speed things up because obviously you guys went to the site and there isn't any evidence of a road. Why or when will I find, what was the purpose of this road being born, so to speak? So every road has a history about why, it just doesn't drop out of the sky. It's named as a road, like Plains Road is, or any other road. So is there a paper in here that says when it was first established and for what purpose?
Well, it showed up, it showed up first in the sixties. I have a map here of nineteen forty-nine, and the road was Yule Lane, went by Cook's Pond, and hooked all the way into Gerblov Road. Cook's Pond wasn't even there. And then in the sixties, Cook's Pond showed up, and this spur showed up for some reason at that time. I believe it was to access the property that Mr. Keston bought behind his property, because the map clearly showed that this road stopped on that parcel. But now he owns both parcels, so it's no longer, you know, I'm guessing, I'm not a lawyer.
No one found any documents to say that?
All I have is a map from the forty-nine, it doesn't show the road at all, and then a map from sixty or ninety-three that shows it. But it is, it had showed up between forty-nine and then the sixties during that whole, I believe it was during the whole flood control fiasco where they changed all the roads, they might have thrown this one in, in that cycle. It was not in the deed, it wasn't, it wasn't done early, hate to say. I think there was a lot going on between the interstate and the flood control areas that maybe some paperwork never got, I'm just speculating. It seems that that area was a lot of this.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
I do have one, just so for clarity.
Yeah?
It's a class four road. The letter that was sent to Johnson was U, but it's a class four with a U, which means identifiable or untraveled.
Okay.
Already past four, untraveled, sorry. Just for clarity, that's in my report from what I found after the light.
I have only one more question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Is, has anybody raised any concerns outside of John? Has anybody said anything?
There was one question that was brought up, if Brandon can clarify, because a gentleman on Golden Ridge Road had a parcel that was landlocked, and he was wondering if this would affect him. And we had a conversation and showed him the maps and where it was, and he agreed with us that it will not affect him at all, plus he already found another way. That was the only, that was the only question other than John.
I'm scanning through the information from the five fifteen report for discontinuance of a town highway. I remember, Dave, because you asked about documents that showed this road existing, and there was somewhere in here I saw something that said something about whether, whether any of those certificates existed or not. So sometimes that happens.
Nobody's found anything in the vault, huh? It's just a little bit odd, that's all.
I think we've got examples of everything that seems to be there.
Oh, I meant specifically for ninety-five.
Right.
I mean, I think we have a list of roads in town. I'm sure that Ray does, somewhere in some book, identifying whatever numbers they are and things, so it's a little hard not to follow, you know, when this road appeared. I know, he just said he's got it on a map, but what was the purpose? It wasn't anywhere near the flood control thing, so I'm not, not.
I think, I think they were discussing roads at that time.
Yep, I know they were.
That's where it got thrown in, it was nineteen sixty-two before it showed up in the state highway map.
I don't think you've fitted cars through that rock wall, the hole.
No.
My assumption truly is that when they laid out Cook's Pond Road, somebody wanted to tell a road to their property for a right-of-way across John's first parcel, because it stopped right at the line. It didn't matter, it was a free.
What year do you think that was?
I'm guessing it was sixty-two, because in forty-nine, the road, Cook's Pond wasn't even there.
Well, maybe between now and the next hearing, whatever, a couple of weeks or whatever, if we can't make a decision, I don't think we can tonight. I think this is, I think this is similar to going from, like when we upgraded Ace of Grouse Road from four to three, I really do. So maybe somebody can go upstairs and look in the minutes of the selectmen at the time in nineteen sixty, and it's only going to be twenty-four meetings, I mean.
From forty-nine to sixty.
No, 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 I wouldn't go that far back. I'd just go in nineteen sixty-two, which is what you referred to.
Ray, because I'm, I'm sitting here as a judge tonight, I'd like you to explain something for me. And that is, if, if I were to Google, I'm trying to pose questions to you. If I were to Google highway ninety-five, what shows up? What does it come up as?
Google Maps would probably send it.
Correct.
It would be mapped out, but they do their little drive around map out, they assume it's in the driveway.
Okay.
It's in my data.
And I have another question. This goes to Nicole. Nicole came to the meeting on Thursday night, doesn't know the area. You Googled it, where did you end up?
I forgot what the name of that.
Yule Lane.
But you said it happens all the time, what was the name of that?
Oh, Yule Lane.
Yeah, Yule Lane.
Yule Lane, Yule Lane used to be the main road that gets you to Gerblov. You'd go from Weathersfield Center Church out Yule Lane, past Cook's Pond, all the way down the hill and tie in at Dennis Sugar Tank on Gerblov. And now that's all gone. And sometime in forty-nine, it was on the map in forty-nine, so sometime there's a flood somewhere, and they got rid of that road, and then they made Cook's Pond tie into Yule Lane, and then added this spur. I don't know when that happened.
Right.
When did Google accumulate their information to be able to tell you that?
They drive around, they drive around with a little camera on their car, and they, Google Maps is all the place, all designed at some point, within what, how many years did it come to your driveway? A decade?
I don't know if that happened.
So sometime in the last decade, they did a little map tour, and it told people that his driveway was ninety-five, because they assumed it, because that's the only road they saw, just like us, where people up down there, you saw pasture, you never assumed that was ninety-five. There was never a name, there's no name in the state system, and it says Town Highway ninety-five. It's just weird.
Okay. Do we need any more evidence or discussion on this this evening?
I'd like to make sure that all the stuff that Mr. Keston did for research out of the vault upstairs.
Oh, yeah.
Added, I was told that nothing was discussed or sent in can be added until it's done at this meeting.
That's correct.
So I want to assure everything that he said, and all that I wrote is added.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was the other thing I wanted to do, and I apologize. Where is that list, Brandon?
It's, it's within the memo that I wrote to the board, and everything's in attachments, so we have attachment B through G.
I'm trying to find it here. Because I did, I did see that, ah, there it is. Okay. So, so item one, or, yeah, I'm going to call him item one, will be the notice of the public hearing. Number two will be the site examination minutes, which we just adopted. Three is the highway superintendent letter to the town manager. Four is the resident request to discontinue highway ninety-five. Five will be the report on proceedings regarding the change of a highway. Six will be the nineteen sixty-four highway mileage map of Weathersfield, and then.
I would add those separately.
So one, two, three, four, five, six. So seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, is what you're saying? Add those individual maps? Okey-dokey. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So number seven is nineteen sixty-two map, eight is the sixty-three map, nine is the sixty-four map, ten is the sixty-six map, eleven is the seventy-one map, twelve is the seventy-three map, seventy-three D, thirteen is the seventy-three R map, and fourteen will be the nineteen eighty-six map. Is there anything else that needs to be added in evidence? We have not received any letters from anybody, any written, either support or other on this, have we? Or have we? Has anybody sent anything in on this?
Just questions that we answered, and like Ray was saying.
And we would still be receiving that after this, correct? If somebody submits something between, as long as this hearing's open for the next three readings?
Yeah.
And if we can't find that, then we'll get an opinion to mirror on it.
Yeah, and I just contacted the attorney in regard to the three public hearings. I'm looking at state statute, I don't see that as a requirement, so I did pose it to our town council just to verify.
Well, let's see if Mr. Arison has any, can help us.
I think you're right, Brandon, the three meetings, I'm confused whether there's a site visit, there was this hearing, and then after sixty days, there's the results. I'm sort of getting three hearings from.
Okay, so, so we can close the hearing tonight with a decision, we have sixty days to issue a decision.
That's my opinion.
I can send, I can show you this and agree with you all, but.
I read that earlier, but I'm going on what Dave was saying. When we did the trails and stuff, the ancient, under the ancient roads, was that three hearings?
Can you talk about the Yule Lane extension or connect in, or?
Well, I remember when we did that whole thing, we had a whole bunch of those that we had.
That was a different process, though. That was a blanket situation that was unique, it's not a normal procedure.
This is a discontinuance, I worked with town council to draft this memo that I've submitted to you.
Okay.
And it says appoint a date, a time and date, not multiple times and dates, and give thirty days' notice to the petitioners.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with closing this hearing tonight. The board have any issues with that, or any discussion on that? Hearing none, and there's no further evidence? Anybody wants to submit on this at this time? This has been warned for how long? Thirty days?
Yes. It's been long.
Since, since June fifth? Since June fifth, so it's more than that. More like forty-five days. Okay. So I'm going to declare the hearing closed at this time. That means there's no more evidence to be taken. And the board now needs to make a determination on a, either deliberative session or making a decision now with what you have, if you want to take some time and go over it. That's fine.
I do want to note that the board needs to issue a decision in writing. Within sixty days after the examination and hearing, the Select Board shall return the original petition with a report of its findings and of the manner of notifying the parties together with a survey or discontinuance to the town clerk's office.
We're going to set that date, well, we don't really need to set the date, we've got sixty days to do it, but we need to discuss whether we're, I guess the only thing we need to know is, are we going to go into a deliberative session, or are we going to, or is the board ready to move on this now?
Are you still in the hearing?
No, hearing is done.
Okay.
Closed it.
So town council did lay out one specific question the board should ask itself, and that's, the Select Board's decision needs to determine that the discontinuance is required for the public good, necessity, and convenience of the inhabitants of the municipality for section seven-ten.
And that's in, that's in your write-up, and that would still be a discussion that the board would have in a deliberative session? That's our decision to make. And I was already considering that.
And then Peter stated, in other words, the Select Board needs to make findings for why they are choosing to discontinue if the board decides to do this, and it should be focused more on why it's no longer in the town's interest to keep and maintain the road.
What road?
Well, that's just it, that's, that's, that's just it. There isn't, technically. So does the board want to set a date to get, we don't have to, I mean, we do, we have to set a date to get together, but it's not a warned meeting or hearing, it's deliberative session. So it can be anytime, anywhere. What does the board like to do? No ideas?
Sorry, I'm not being helpful for you.
Okay, then I will. I'll give the board the rest of this week to review the evidence that's been submitted. And let me see, what's next week look like? What do we got next week?
Monday, Monday meeting.
Monday's a planning commission.
We have sixty days, so as long as it's on the next agenda.
I'd rather get it done and get it over with. It's a deliberative session, it's the board anyway, so. How's the board feel about either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of next week for a deliberative session? And that could be, we might as well do it here.
I'd rather do it on a regular scheduled night. Seems like there's a flurry of meetings here lately.
Okay, well, that's, how's everybody else feel about that? I'm fine with that, too. Everybody good with that? We'll do it on a regular night? It's not really an exact session, it's just a deliberative session, so. It doesn't need to be warned, you want to do it before or after a meeting? What's your preference there? Dave?
I mean, the weather has just raised havoc with everything, so it's, if it's a sunny day, I mean, frankly, I don't, you know, my comment would be, I pretty much think it's, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what everybody else is going to talk about in executive session. I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the handling of the hearings. I, I don't, I think, well, the last one that I think that I was involved with might have been Ace of Grouse Road, and the board, I think, heard from the residents and had a site visit, and I was in on Gremlin Road, too, and then the board, I don't think we ever met in private on any of those roads, I think we just said, you've seen enough, and then somebody makes a motion to either accept it as a three, or, or they moved it that way. And this isn't, this isn't a lot different.
And this, this one, to me, this one is fairly simple, because there's nothing there. There's barely a hole in a stone wall. We could do this right now if we want to. The question, Brandon, could you read that question again, from the attorney?
The subcourt's decision needs to determine that the discontinuance is required for the public good, necessity, and convenience of the inhabitants of the municipality for section seven-ten. In other words, the Select Board needs to make findings for why they are choosing to discontinue if the board decides to do that, and it should be focused more on why it's no longer in the town's interest to keep and maintain the road. A private landowner's desire to have a road discontinued is not sufficient.
Okay, I would start with number one, there's no physical asset. If you go out there and look, that's a field, it is not a road. There's no turnway in, there's no culvert to get in, we didn't even walk out to see the other end, because we were told the other end is the same as the beginning. So there's no physical asset. So number one, as a public good, there is no public good. You can't. The hearing is done, this is deliberative session, this is the board only at this point. Sorry. Number two, you want to talk about public good, when you have today's world of social media and Google, Google Maps, whatever, and they're sending people all over the place up there, and none of it is actually travelable, it's kind of dangerous. It's not good for the landowners that live up there, and it's not good for the people that are driving out through there. They're going to get lost and get stuck. So, so there's a public good there, as far as I'm concerned. I'm trying to throw some things out there and start a conversation. Paul, go ahead.
So class four U, that means, what do you have to do as a highway person with the road the way it is as a class four? You have to go out there, look at it, make sure and maintain it?
Could I ask you?
Yes, you, he's asking you a question, yes.
I have the same question, that's what, that is my question.
Because, because this is what I'm going to go for here, is to say, if it's going to cost the town money, because we've got to now make it a road, or upkeep it, and plow it, or do whatever, plus go through.
It is a class four road, untravelable or impassable. So legally, Act sixty-four, the laws, you have to inspect it and make sure there's no erosion, you have to fix any erosion you find.
Just that.
The other thing that leaves us open is if John Keston decided to self-divide his property, that's a town right-of-way, and he could fix it up, or ask permission to fix it up, and eventually it could become a class three town road, which would definitely cost us all money to maintain. It's just, that's just a.
We have to stick with the physical stuff that's on the ground now.
So, so there could be a possible, you know, cost to upkeep, and which, of something that's not there.
All class four roads, so we'd have to get it surveyed so I know exactly where it is, so I can actually cross the hill. I mean, obviously, there's no road maintenance in the field, but.
Well, yes. So cost.
This has shifted, so are you considering, I think like five minutes ago, we were going to name a date of when we're going to meet to determine this, has this shifted now?
Yeah, 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 I'm just, I'm going at it right now, we're going right through it. The hearing is closed, so we're not really taking evidence. Ray is the highway superintendent, so questions to him like that I'll allow. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to answer the question from the town's attorney that is, the, the public good, that, that, yeah, discontinuance is, basically discontinuance is a public good. It's going to serve. The dis, yeah, discontinuance is, basically discontinuance is a public good. It's going to serve the public. And the public's not going to be harmed by us discontinuing this. Um, I think the public is somewhat harmed, a- and certainly the, the landowner is harmed by leaving it this way because he, he's got traffic going out there that has no business going out there. He can't get through. It, it, it kind of tells you, that's why Nicole got lost. It was telling her she could get through. And, and you can't. It doesn't exist.
It's on the map, so it doesn't even show up. If I look at it, it doesn't even show up. It's not even, it doesn't, it doesn't even exist.
I Googled it from the other end, because I was going to try coming through Yule Lane. Zach says, no, don't go that way. You won't make it.
Yeah, and Cook's Pond takes you down his driveway.
Yeah.
It's not even the same thing.
Yeah.
Right. So I, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, it, it, my thought is, all of this goes away if we discontinue this.
Yeah, I was going to say, it looks like there may be more public good in discontinuing it than actually keeping it.
I, I agree. Any further discussion on the, actually, we're not really in the, this is, this is just an open discussion because we're deliberation. Dave, you have anything on this?
No, but I think if you, are we going to continue this for another day, or are you, you're, you're going to do it right now?
I'm going to call a vote.
Will, will there need to be a motion?
Yep, to discontinue the road, yeah. Um, i- is there any other discussion on this? And it, does anybody here feel that that road is serving the town in any way? Positive?
The only thing that I would add would be, I would sure want to make sure that we have the ability to open a hearing tonight, clo- in a matter of fifteen minutes, close the hearing tonight, and decide tonight on any road in town. And I didn't hear an answer to that quite yet.
I think the vote should, we should hold the vote pending council until the next regularly scheduled meeting, just to get that answer.
Okay. You think so?
When's, when's the next, when's the next board meeting?
Uh, it's just seventh, I think. Um. Let's see here. Yeah, August seventh.
So you, you just, you want to play it safe? You just hold off a little bit?
Yeah, because we're not in like a huge rush.
Okay.
And I think I could also draft.
A- and, and that would, huh?
You could draft a motion, too.
You could draft a motion, and, and it would also allow another couple of weeks for anybody that has missed this at this point, that if they, if they have any questions or comments they want to make. Uh, well, no, we can't because I closed the hearing. Hearing's closed, so they can't. So, where are you going?
Just a statement, I will not be available on August seventh.
Um.
It's okay.
Yeah, but I think we're, we're, we're ba- we're basically done.
But my question is answered. I'm ready to make a decision once we're allowed to, and I don't have, I don't need to deliberate anymore.
And anybody else need any more deliberation on this? Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll put it on for a decision at the next meeting.
Okay, so it's good.
I, I like listening to the town manager. We, we pay him to tell us what to do. Okay. Thank you all for coming. The, the hearing is closed and over, so moving on. Uh, comments from select board, town manager, and citi- citizens, topics not on the agenda. Who's up? DeForest? Go, go ahead. Go ahead.
I am here on behalf of the Veterans Memorial Committee. Um, as you know, at the memorial park, we have three podiums. The center one is for the role of honor. Two side podiums are what we call educational content. Um, we rotate those out periodically, and they're used to honor whether it's for veterans specifically or people who have done great things for veterans in Weathersfield, or right now we have like one that's featuring the Crown Point Military Road. Once those panels are retired, we try to find a permanent home for them. We have two of them here. We have three more in storage. I'm here to ask permission if we could use the north classroom of the District One Schoolhouse in Tuckerville to hang, um, some of the retired panels. They'd be framed just like this.
Anybody have any, any issues with that?
No.
No, not at all.
That's why they go on, on, the person.
That's horrible.
But it's a town building. I need someone to permission.
Uh, you need that in writing?
As long as it's in the minutes, I'm good with that.
I'm going to make a motion to, to allow the veterans committee to, uh, hang the necessary, uh, plaque inside the eighteen seventy-nine, is that eighteen?
It would be more than one, yes.
Okay, um, inside the eighteen seventy-nine building.
Second thought.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. That's a good idea.
Can I, can I ask a quick question about that? Not, not anything to do with the vote, because obviously we just voted, but would it be nice to have everything in one place? Like, there's some here, some there, or would it be nice to have them spread out like that?
I like having them spread out.
Yeah, okay. Nope, I'm just wondering what the thoughts process was, but, yeah, that's good.
Any, any other comments from any citizens, select board members? John?
Oh, go ahead.
A lot of them were talking about ships. And we're going to research the possibility of getting, uh, ships available, perhaps at the town lodge or whatever.
I think that was Ray.
Yeah. I mean, if, if any ever come available, we could probably find a spot and put some, but right now, they're going just as quick as they're chipping them to people. People run, request them, and they go over to their house and drop them. We also have, the one concern I have is if you have a business in town that sells chips, and I think we'd be taking business away from a person in town that sells chips, and they're going to waste free chips. And to me, that's one concern.
Is, is the business in town receiving free chips from a shipping company and selling it?
That's, that's, I, I don't know. And I know they are selling chips.
Is that, that Shein's?
That's right next to our shop, yeah.
Right. Yeah, no, I think they make all that stuff themselves, don't they?
I don't.
I, I, yeah, I think that all comes right out of their facility.
I, I just had heard that, that someone's purchasing chips that will be delivered there by the shipping companies. I, I don't.
Even if they are delivered by the shipping companies, they are, they are processing them to make them into the chips they are, instead of shredded trees. So they're not just selling regular chips and everything.
So even if they're buying them, they're processing, so.
This voice that is concerned.
Okay, yep.
If there was a compost facility in town, sole compost, I would feel comfortable giving it out for free at a transfer station and competing with them.
Gotcha. Um, now, who else was raising their hand? Was it you?
Me.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Um, on, uh, last week, last week was a, a, a bit of a fiasco to, uh, to, to, uh, phrase an understatement. Um, I asked you to put on the agenda for tonight, um, to talk about the grand list and the, um, meetings, and you, you did not want to do that. Uh, it has very big implications beyond the fact that the, not the correct grand list was used, uh, because for the second year in a row, uh, it's very startling to learn that the grand list went down. Um, so I see the town manager has an update here, but I think it, I think it requires much more in-depth, um, than having a passover where we just read some things saying it won't happen again. And I thank Paul for also asking for that a day earlier than what I did, because on the July twelfth minutes, they're not, they're not printed here for us to look at, but, um, I found them on the website that Nicole had submitted them already. Uh, your statement was, that you also wanted it on for tonight's minutes, uh, to ta- um, agenda item. It's going to require some study here about how and why the grand list is going down. It's, it's startling. And I, so, in the town policy, and I, I don't know if I made that clear to you, Mike, and if I didn't, then I apologize. Um, but it's going to have dramatic implications on us with this budget coming up, because there's nowhere in the universe that we ever would have assumed that the grand list would go down to prepare for the budget process. Um, so, policy in the town is very clear. It says that the chair sets the agenda, and I see that it was crowded. Um, but after that, a person can bring it before, before the board, uh, asking that three board members also agree and place it on the agenda.
It, it, it won't be necessary to go there. It wa- it wasn't clear, uh, what, what you said. Thank you for that. Um, it, because I did, uh, through all this, talked to Brandon about exactly that same point, and without even knowing that you were, I missed that you had said that. But him and I had, Brandon and I did talk about exactly that same point. We've got to get our hands on, why is that going down? I want, I, and I told him, I want to see those sheets, those documents, which is, I think is the same thing you were asking for, Dave, is, we've got to, we've got to go over those documents. We've got to see what is causing that, that drop on our grand list. How, it's, it's a depreciation drop that's happening.
If, if that's the case, then I want what they've got.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding, right?
So, I, I don't know. I, I don't think it's fair to say somebody didn't print me out the right, my, right report, because then that, too, would trigger another question. I didn't know we had multiple choice lists, grand lists.
Um, I, I actually ran into, um, Barb, uh, the lister, and, and she owned that, one hundred percent. And I, I meant to tell you that.
For us to talk, but, but I think that you should schedule it to August sixth or seventh.
And I'm, I'm fine. I, yeah, we'll do that. Okay, Brandon? We, because we do need, we need.
My town manager report, as requested by following the last meeting, so I.
Yeah, but is that, is that in concern or?
Not in concern with depreciation.
Yeah, because that's.
That was more of a corrective action thing, but, but I agree with Dave, too. It's like we, yeah, it is kind of weird about two.
Well, what I talked to him about is what, you know, I, I think the IRS schedule i- is what is followed for depreciation. I'm not sure we have.
Let's get some, let's.
But let's, we need to look into it. We need, we need to see it.
Put it on and.
The other question I had was that when, it was a bit of a frantic thing to schedule this meeting for the twelfth, after having the meeting the eleventh. So I was called a couple of times, and, um, the meeting was, it's on the website. You'd fre- feel free to look. It says that it was posted for six thirty. Um, and I think you told me, Mike, I'll call you and see if you, you know, you can get there or whatever. And then, so, at six thirty, came and went, and when I called in the num- the phone numbers, it said, I'm sorry, your meeting's over. So when I looked up your minutes, somebody, somebody called the meeting to order at six oh two, and it was over at six eighteen. I don't know how many times, you know, that we're going to do this. Um, but the website says six thirty right now, so. What do you mean?
No, that meeting was set for six o'clock, because that, that was the night I was at the police station.
Yeah, the actual agenda says six P M., but the meeting is accustomed to six thirty on the website, and it must have.
Okay, so that, so, so Dave, yeah, Dave was right on it, at least though.
But the actual agendas that were posted are at six P M.
Yep.
All right, wow.
And, and I, I actually wasn't physically there, Dave. Um, I, I almost got killed in Springfield, and I went down to the police station and filed a report. Um, and, and, and I actually participated on the phone, uh, from Springfield Police Department.
But to Dave's point, if somebody just looked on the webpage.
Sure, you know, that, that's right. Yep.
So, yeah.
John?
This is from D R B evaluation from Montoya. This is a person that's assigned to Southeastern from Ohio. I'm not sure to be exact, but. But it might be helpful to have her come in, and I don't know her name, but I can get it, um, and explain the utilities and how the depreciation schedule works. What I would, I'd be speculating, but I would assume that it's high at the beginning and then it kind of flat goes. But it'd be nice to know, when you say the budget, that, hey, it's going to go down another ten percent next year, and then eight, and any.
Well, like, like Dave usually says, you know, we, we usually expect to see the grand list rise about a, a percent each year, and that's through our, you know, zoning and, you know, our growth.
Yeah, but we had an eighteen million dollar bump up last month on this.
That's, and it's on a downhill roll. It's, it's a big snowball.
We had the same thing last year with it.
Yeah, we did. It, it hit us last year, and it did it again this year.
But I don't.
This is Dave, the utility company stuff goes off and down.
But, but Dave's current point is also well-taken, and that is, um, uh, confusion on meetings and schedules and, and notices and that stuff. It, it needs to be accurate, uh, you know, and consistently accurate.
I guess when we start preparing for the information that we need to get on this, there's a definite, uh, uh, break between what is considered to be building and actually immovable assets and then equipment for our, for, that could be depreciated. I don't think that the plant or the lines get depreciated. I think that those are similar to what buildings are in town. If they're going to be looked at as depreciated, somebody better be coming over to my place, because, like I said, then we're going to start depreciating everybody's buildings? That's bizarre. So the grand list is set on those. The question would be, what is Velco and what is, uh, Green Mountain Power describing as, in our equipment tax or whatever that thing is later?
For a personal pro- I think it's personal property.
Yes.
Uh, it's referred to as a business tax. Um, yeah.
But anyway, that's for another day. That's fine.
Uh, uh, you've got that dates on that for that, for the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments, uh, from anybody? Ray?
Is there anything on the agenda or in your, in your report discussing this at all?
There is the update that you asked me to put in there.
I just have one, one thing to add, going to do at that time.
Yeah.
You do it at that time with him?
As long as it's on the agenda, I'll talk about it later.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, um, review minutes of previous meetings. Do I hear a, a motion to approve minutes of six nineteen twenty twenty-three? That'll be the first set. There are two sets.
I'll make it.
You have a motion. Do we hear a second?
Yes.
Motion's been made in second to adopt the minutes of six nineteen twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of six twenty-seven twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Sure.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Town manager update. Brandon, you're up.
Uh, so in the last meeting, the board, board asked me to provide an update on the tax rate revision and need for an emergency meeting. Um, so on July sixth, the Weathersfield grand list, which is our four eleven, was distributed to my office. From there, the tax rate was computed, and a special meeting to set the tax rate was one for July eleventh. When Suzanne and I entered the approved tax rates into Nemrick, we noticed the grand list differed from the grand list the tax rate was calculated on and differed from the four eleven we were given. We immediately contacted the chair and scheduled an emergency meeting for July twelfth to rescind the July eleventh tax rate vote and to set the tax rate based on the final F Y twenty-four grand list. Um, so I did hear the comment that it was news that we have multiple grand lists. We have a working grand list, and once the working grand list has everything it needs, it's converted into the fiscal year's grand list. Um, and I was given the draft grand list. Um, after I reviewed this and talked to Nate and Barb, it, it was an honest mistake that happened on July sixth, when our lister accidentally printed the draft grand list prior to current use inclusion, um, and distributed to my office. So these are the controls that were in place at the time. Um, so education rates are released from the Vermont Department of Taxes. Listers distribute the grand list, Form eleven, to the tax collector. The tax collector calculates the tax rate based on the grand list. The select board Wednesday meeting to set the tax rate based on the tax collector's computation and the grand, and the grand list as provided by the listers. Tax collector verifies tax rate and grand list, which is where I, where we verified it this past time, and noticed that there was an issue. Tax collector sets the tax rate, and Nemrick prints tax bills and distributes to Doolittle's. Doolittle's prints tax bills, stuffs them into envelopes with a transfer station permit sticker, and sends them to Quality Mailing House for postage and mailing. Um, after this happened, we added one additional control to prevent the four eleven going to the board prior to, um, verifying it. So you can see that in bold there. So now it's been changed to education rates are released from the Vermont Department of Taxes. Listers distribute grand list, Form eleven, to the tax collector. Task collector verifies grand list, Form eleven, and then it goes, uh, it's calculated, and then it goes to the select board. Um, this way we can catch it before it comes to the board, and then we'll verify it one more time after it goes to the board, and we, and we calculate it.
Do you want to deal question, with questions or comments now or you want to wait until you're finished?
I'm ready.
I, I have one that I think of and that comes from the planning commission. When we, we are dealing with documents over there and, and we see it on our, our minutes as well, says draft right across it. Is there a way to get that on there when it's the working document? There isn't, huh?
There's not.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anybody else? Go ahead.
All right, virtual meeting technology is my last update. We're working with our IT company, CCI Technologies and Sapa to improve our virtual meeting technology. We're holding a site visit down here with both our IT company and Sapa. And we'll have further updates as improvements are made. We appreciate your patience with this. We will be discontinuing the wires and moving to wireless as well. Not only are there safety hazards described by OSHA and VOSHA when Wade Mezzer held a site visit down here. They're also quite an eyesore and time consuming to set up. So, I think that by moving to wireless, it'll solve a lot of our issues, but also improving our virtual system. I'd like to pass it over to Ray to give a storm update.
Yeah, you guys want to start with Dave real quick or try and quick?
Can I ask one thing quick? All right, first.
Yeah, I'm trying.
No, is it on?
Yeah, it's on, that's, yeah.
Okay, as long as everybody can still hear and it's still on, that's all. Thank you.
So, obviously, we had a initial storm on Friday, the 8th. Feeling we got, we prepared fairly well here. The 10th, there was a significant rainfall, everybody knows about it, Loveville, Cavendish, we flooded. The roads that we did have problems with are Falls Road, Little Scotty Road and Scotty Basin. So, basically the Black River and north branch of the Black River corridors. All of the roads did see significant rain, but especially the places where you do have the ditches that are new, held up, knocked on wood. I do want to let everybody in town know that yes, we have potholes here and there and we're aware of it. But right now, the ground is so saturated that every time it's going to rain, the water's going to come out of the watershed and into our ditches and into our roads. And we have to make sure our culverts and our ditches and our cutouts are done, so that's what we're focusing on. So, if you don't see the grader, you have a few potholes or puddles on your roads, we're not forgetting about you. We're focusing on the hills that the water's starting to run down the road and potentially going to wash them out for the next heavy rain. Our crew has been working, we've had a lot of trucks to Cavendish since Wednesday afternoon. Get three trucks Wednesday afternoon and all day, Thursday, all day, Friday and all day Saturday and one truck today. I had a meeting with the guys this morning, they all agreed that it's important to help our neighbors and we were riding one truck. And everybody stepped up and they're, they're working more here to keep our stuff going. We just started a grant project on Golden Ridge, our interior operator was available, thank God, and they're going to get in at the deadline. So, that's going on as well. So, we're trying to maintain our stuff and also help the neighbors, so. Any questions?
Anybody?
We, we did repair Scotty Basin Bridge Road. The aprons on both sides, but the bridge has been damaged and we had to lower the rate to 16,000 pounds. There was a sign that says 12,000 pounds. And thank God, we had a grant that just got completed for a design of that bridge. So, Friday, literally before the storm, I received all the drafts for the plant. And you take pictures within a week or a week and a half of the damage. I guess when Irene hit, there's some damage happened and the state said you can't say it, you know, there's no pictures from before and after. And right now, I literally can stand there with the engineer, see before and after everything and there's significantly more damage than there was before. So, we're hoping that will be included in our, our repairs. I do want to get the apron paid back the way it was as soon as possible, just so we get it out of the way and done. And the ridge being, ridge deck being replaceable, not affect that apron. Little Scotty Bridge, we have to go back and inspect that now that the water's low, make sure there's no scowl underneath the abutments. That's one thing we're worried about and we definitely need to fix the riprap, which is stone, big stone. We put in to protect the abutment on the Coverdalls, Upper Falls Bridge. It was done before, it was just kind of dropped over and replaced. I would recommend seeing how it's going to be, a storm damage repair, that we get a good design, key it right in, dig it in, get a permit, dig it right into the river. Put in some good boulders and really build it significantly better than it was before. It did hold up, but it was getting close. It did its job, but it was, it's right back to the bank now at the abutment. If you guys want to go look at it sometime, that's just my recommendation. Thanks.
Any questions for Ray?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dave.
You know, I drove up to the Scotty Basin and I, and I think I talked to you about this already, I don't know. And I'm just offering this as an idea. I, I think, that was a guy, that wasn't me. I've been accused of that before.
G O D?
I would, I would offer this, I know that that. Go again, must be, must be somebody.
Being centered?
Somebody upstairs, that must be my halo. I know that that bridge was damaged in Irene and now again. So, I would offer this, that I know there's, I don't know if everybody's familiar with that or not, but it's connected to Churchill Road, which has a small covered bridge, much lower in weight limits. And there's probably, what is there, like 10 or 12 house residents of Weathersfield anyway?
Bein' Weathersfield loan, your trailer park, yeah.
So, I, you know, I would offer this, that you continue to monitor that weight and if you need to lower it and also to maybe to contact those residents through, whatever, the town office and say, listen, I know you've got to get fuel oil, I know you've got to get stuff. But we don't want like 30,000 pounds going over that bridge and even though they can, because the last thing you want is to have that compromised and then don't have. Because it doesn't look like there's going to be any repair before snow, right? I can't imagine.
We can fast track it over here, may have died and hope it's, that it pays back.
I would offer that as a suggestion.
Yeah, also, just so people know, we did not bring our grader across there and West Benjamin has offered a greater road in the interim to help us out. And they also helped us with the grader, the excavator and gave us material to repair and replace. So, our little trucks went across on there and half loaded to fix the road. So, a big shout out to West Benjamin, they were awesome.
Just, just so everybody knows, what they do is they come down on the river, they built up off next to that little covered bridge. They don't go across the covered bridge, they're, they're down in and they come in, up in and out.
So, also, people think that it's just cracks in the cement, ashes and cement. This bridge is a pre-tensioned bridge, which means when they pour the mold or the form, they pre-tension all the cables, they tighten up. After your strength is, they pour the concrete around it and holds the cables in place. As soon as it's chipped or cracked, those cables are exposed, the cables release their tension and it no longer has the structural integrity to hold that way. So, our recommendation on the rebuilds, do not go that, I, I don't like that style of bridge for that reason. Even salt or anything will corrode this concrete, make it crack. So, that's, that's not an option when you replace it on the tracks that we have.
Okay, any other questions, Ray? And Brendan, you going to finish up on the, your report?
Uh, that's the end of my report.
That, that's the end of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just shooting something off to our IT company.
Uh, okay, Kelly, go ahead.
Um, on your manager's report, you didn't have a follow-up on that Melody Lane?
Yes, we, we did go over to Melody Lane with the land use administrator and they were complying with their, with their permit.
Yeah.
Yep. And we continued to follow up and review it and so far, the claims were, were not accurate.
Wow. Interesting. Also want to give a shout out to all of our first responders in Weathersfield. When the storm came, they, they were proactive and got themselves organized and prepared ahead of time. So, thank you to all of them. I know they put in some long days with what was going on. So, again, thank you, thank you to all our first responders here in Weathersfield.
And just a little bit more on Melody Lane. One of the claims was that they were living at the residence and they are not. They were able to produce hotel receipts. Another claim was that they were using the bathroom inside of the home while they were working on it and living in it. They have a corridor party outside and there's nowhere to use the bathroom inside currently. They do go there each day to, they're building the house up themselves, so they're working on it themselves. And when the land use administrator and I were pulling into the residence, they were actually in front of us, they had just left Home Depot with building materials. So, they do have time to do the septic and the water and those are required before they move into the property. And they did say that would happen.
Any questions on Melody Lane?
No, I just wanted to make sure that the people were aware that we were still on it, so.
Yep.
Yep, no, thank you, Kelly.
Did you send something out to them, a decision or?
The land use administ, I.
Okay.
It's land use, so I.
Okay.
Give it back to the land use administrator. My issue from a health officer perspective is resolved.
Yep.
Unless septic and water don't go like itself.
Very good. Any other, well, that's town manager, any questions for the town manager before we move on? Hearing none, vote to award Upper Falls Covered Bridge bid?
Move to award Upper Falls Covered Bridge Repair Project to Renault Brothers for a total cost not to exceed $29,500.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote to award fiscal year 24 paving project. Got to get through these, in this thing. Do I hear a motion?
To award the fiscal 24 paving project to Blacktop Incorporated for a total cost not to exceed $59,250. Of which 50,000 will be used from the FY24 Highway Bud, Department Budget. And 9,250 will be used from the Highway Capital Maintenance and Improvement Reserve Account.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Go.
Um, is there a timetable on this? Because even though it's FY24, which just started two days ago. I don't know if it's, I don't know how you run the cash flow thing, but if that bill came in like, and they did it like tomorrow and then you pay for it, it's not necessarily true that we get all that money. And we come, it comes in quarterly, so you run this by the treasurer?
I have not run it by the treasurer, but I will talk with him on Thursday to confirm that cash flow is, is in line with this.
If not, we'd have to borrow money, which is always a headache. When does this bid expire? Anybody know?
Uh, it's good until June 30th of next spring. The bid expires in 60 days. So, you have to accept it in 60 days, but the work has until June 30th.
Where are we at on?
They're definitely going to be here next September.
This was received in June 22, 23. He's saying you want to hold?
No, I just didn't know how, you know, did anybody thought this through about if they, if they came and said, okay, and here it is and?
You could add to the motion contingent on adequate cash flow.
Hmm, no, that's your job.
Yep.
No, because.
No, I agree.
No, because I said what is true. I mean, if he, if, if the bill came in and then he goes to the treasurer, then we have to have a borrow, an operation loan to borrow. I don't think so, but it, but I don't know, I don't know what other bills there are. It's $60,000. And it's using money that just got prorated like right now, which means that it's not really collected. In fact, none of it's collected yet.
Right. Yeah, but the town's bank accounts are better than mine, most of the time, I think.
So, I'll ensure that we have enough cash flow prior to award.
Yeah, but we're going to vote on the motion now.
We're going to vote on the motion to award it.
Or prior to giving the update and the report, yeah.
We have enough cash in the bank. It is fiscal year, am I not mistaken that it's fiscal year 24 Department, Highway Department Budget for $50,000? And we're in that budget now?
Yeah, but we do have things coming in and out all the time.
Okay.
For cash flow purposes, we just need to make sure that in the first or second quarter, having $60,000 go out in addition to everything else that's going out is going to be.
Okay. So, you have a handle on this?
Right.
How, how, how to schedule and, and work the payments?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote to award crack sealing proposal. Okay, got to get there. I gotta, I gotta say, it is faster to do this with, with, when it's in paper.
Where is this location? Where's the location across here?
Center Road, Reservoir Road, Stokewell and Airport. We have a great bit of grant for paving and I actually wrote the grants, money, money left over I could use for crack sealing or block sealing. And crack sealing is the way we want to go. So, you have $56,000 left over in that grant. We have to use it before the end of December this year.
Okay, so this is not part of like the last one, which is the FY24 budget? This is a different, this is a grant.
The grants go for a two-year cycle.
Yeah, but.
There's a grant in 2022, we disappear in 2023, it's still open.
Okay.
Okay.
What is I N D U S?
Indus.
Yeah, but what? Thank you.
Wow.
Sorry.
I thought it stood for something. I can read that. I thought it was short for something.
No, it used to be something Industries, now it's just Indus. And they've done a lot of work in the state of Vermont, so they are definitely qualified for the job. People would usually use it as NICO.
It's a company that actually crack seals?
Correct.
Okay, that.
Crack seal, block seal that you.
Perfect, I didn't know.
Thing on 103 where they tear the pavement up, heat it up and then lay it back down, they have, they do, they're huge.
Okay, do we hear, do we have the motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we award FY24 crack sealing project to Indus Company, right? For, for a total cost not to exceed $48,744 to be paid through the Class 2 paving grant from, for the town.
And we have a second, any discussion on the motion? I think we've already gone through that.
Thanks, Ray.
Yep.
Um, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Waste water feasibility study kickoff presentation, is that you? And you are?
Uh, pardon, Joe, without our Greek engineering. I see you guys got a full agenda, so I will try to be as brief as I possibly can about this. So, some of you may or may not have remembered, almost about a year ago, we sat in this room and talked about doing a wastewater feasibility study for the two villages, both the Scotty and Bergensville. Financing for that has finally come through, grants have been awarded. And this is kind of the kickoff to how we're, how we're going to get started on this. So, the intent is to give you guys some basic information, allow you guys to start asking questions, comments about how we're going to do this. The first one, I'll, I'll, before I get going too much, Emily Hackett's online, she is the WID reviewer for this project. So, she's the state rep who will be reviewing and attending hearings related to the study. I also have a colleague online as well, Mike Moore, I think he's there as well. So, how this process normally goes is there are three major milestones through the study. 30, 60 and 90% of what the state uses for, for Roman culture. For your guys' perspective, 30% is looking at what's existent, what the need is, what the options really are per village. And this actually ends up breaking out between both villages. So, it's almost kind of like two reports into one, because what works for one village may not necessarily be applicable to another village. So, one of the early decisions that the town needs to decide is how these forums and discussions are going to work. Whether this is a full board meeting that happens when we sit down and have these discussions? Is there a subcommittee? As you guys mentioned, there seems to be a lot of meetings going on. Is there, is there a hope that this is a smaller subset that then meets and records out to you guys? Do you want to have this as part of a full board meeting? That's really up to you guys to decide. We will attend, Emily and myself, in whatever forum that you guys want. But essentially, what we would be doing is talking through the status drafts that we get. So, we'll give a draft report at 30%, one at 60%, one at 90%. And 30% will go pretty quickly. I'm hoping we'll be able to sit down and have a meeting in the next couple of weeks. Because that's more the data collection, information gathering portion of it. Between 30 and 60 and even 60 to 90 is where things slow down a little bit because. because once we identify options and available parcels that would be suitable for those purposes, we need to start reaching out to those landowners and, and trying to gauge landowner participation. If landowners choose not to participate, that answers the questions really quickly. If they are interested, there are certain steps that need to go on throughout that process, first being soil evaluation, and then if an option is available that suits the town, getting into appraisals for land, all of those sorts of things. So, that's way down the road as far as the process is concerned. But initially, coming into this, it's really the thirty percent that we're focused on at the moment, and like I said, that's a data collection sort of thing. So, we've done some initial desktop screening of soils, suitable soils for septic purposes, and really just looking at identifying parcels that are of a suitable size and material that would be able to be an onsite solution for either of the villages. So, the thirty percent review would be that kind of initial screening. Here's what we found, here's where it looks like we have some soil that might be suitable, here's where we dumped, and starting to identify potential landowners. We did do a quick screening, it doesn't look like the town has any available land in either village that would be of suitable size. That's usually the first step we go to, is what do you guys own and control? And can we utilize that land that you guys control before we have to go out and look at other potential landowners? And a quick screening of both villages, it does not appear that there's a large swath of land owner controlled by the town, so we automatically started moving into what else is available. So that initial thirty percent meeting will be that discussion. What have we found? What don't we know? What do we need to know from you guys related to failed wastewater systems, uh, lack of growth potential for businesses? There's going to be a lot of local knowledge that we're going to rely on you guys to tell us, especially around growth, but specifically to also start wastewater issues or water supply issues that have occurred in and around town that may or may not affect the project as a whole. Overall goal of the project is to try to give you guys a, a document that moves you a step closer than you are now with a community wastewater system, or a solution. It is not intended to force you guys into doing something you don't want to do. It's not, um, my preference versus somebody else's preferences, what do you guys have for options? What's out there for potential for you guys, and do you want to proceed forward, try to proceed, and get those things forward? I know in the meeting that we had last summer, there was a lot of back and forth about whether this is even a work well exercise to go down. Fully understand that, and I want to just make sure that everybody here realizes that this is not us driving, this is us directing as we're trying to get down, downriver. So, really, this is your guys' document. It does need to be done in a way that meets Emily's requirements and the funding requirements, so that all of this is zero cost to the town, and that is something I wanted to reiterate as well. That was another conversation that we had in the summer was, how much of this was going to be free? Did we know if it was going to be free? The study is fully subsidized at the moment. Hundred percent, um, already authorized to the town that all of this will be forgiven. So it is still a reimbursement process, you still will have to actually pay us first and then ask for the reimbursement from the state, but this is a hundred percent, um, fully forgiven study. They don't call it a subsidy, well, they don't call it a grant, they call it a subsidy. So, wanted to just kind of get your guys' thoughts or opinions or questions that you have about this, what you may have heard other towns are doing, or anything in general while, while I'm standing here, and, and any questions you guys might have about process, information that we're going to gather, how we go about doing this.
Any questions? Paul, I think you got there first.
Uh, just a quick question. You, you mentioned that you were looking at, at land in, in areas that could, you know, encompass wastewater and so on. And since the town apparently doesn't appear to have that, that you're going out and you're looking at other landowners?
Yeah.
How, how does that work? You just put down and say, oh, this is a big field, it looks like it would, it would be worthwhile? Or do you actually go through like, is it agriculture, or is it something that's being used? Is it like?
So, from a screening standpoint, the initial screening is just based on the soil information. Is, is there land with suitable soil? And then all we're doing is identifying property owners that we believe have suitable soil in the amount that may be advantageous for a solution. That is given to the town to say, okay, here's the list of landowners that we think we should reach out to and see if there's any interest. There's no, all it takes is one landowner to say, no, thank you, that's the end of the conversation. This is not sort, any sort of taking or anything along.
No, I just wanted that to be, even though your name shows up, doesn't necessarily mean anything, just means you're.
Correct. And, and we also give you guys the list first, because again, there's that local knowledge of going, oh yeah, don't even bother. We can tell you right now, don't, don't worry about it, don't waste your time, don't make a phone call, it, it's good. The other thing that we do do during the thirty percent process, and we'll go through this in a little bit more detail at the meeting, is we do send out a, a site survey, trying to collect information about people's septic systems and their wells. And that's mainly from a constraint standpoint. Understanding what people have for infrastructure, how, understanding how that constrains, oh, this parcel looks wide open. Well, someone has a drilled, a dug well right there, that encompasses a huge area, which means it's not so available. So, all of that gets screened down to hopefully selecting four or five different landowners in each village to approach. As an example of how it's different village to village, others field will have, or Scottney will have plenty of opportunities and landowners that we can reach. Perkinsville's going to have a very short list, and one of those is the state of Vermont. And I can tell you that's going to be a waste of our time, trying, trying to go on that.
Well, they're, they're all for all kinds of this renewable energy.
They're paying for it, come on.
Fair enough. But yes, I hope that answered your question.
No, that, that definitely doesn't, I just wanted people, anybody that's listening to know that. You know, because this whole thing happened kind of with solar too. All of a sudden, got a map with people's names on it, saying, this is a great solar place, and everybody's like, whoa, 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 so.
Correct. All, all this will be as a screening tool to identify people, this by no means will be anything that will be laid out or designed, or hey, we've already gone down a road and we want to come to your property.
Well, well the, um, with the, I got one, one more on the same thing, sorry. Will the, uh, you're going to look at separate wells for, for this? Or you're going to look at like here at Scottney, there's, you know, there is a, not a town, but a, you know, a water district? Is there anything to be, that could help that water district, you know, increase or, or, or going forward? Or you looking, not even looking at that and just, hey, if we started from scratch, here's what we got?
So, the, so the study is not related to the fire district itself. That doesn't mean that the report wouldn't have comments in there that may or may not be advantageous to the fire district and things that they should be aware of. Generally speaking, we'll go and identify all the water sources within the given areas that we're talking about, because there are constraints to where we could go on an onsite system. So, in this case, it actually opens up more property.
Right.
Because the water system is there as opposed to other villages like Perkinsville that has nothing but wells, and it really limits the amount of available space.
And I had a really quick question, Dave, before, he messed it all up, because it was tied to the other topic.
Oh, sorry.
In, in, this is quick. In, in the discussion of, of, with people about wastewater system, I'm not sure if this is looking at the, the town having a wastewater system or just available space. If it is, would it be, would it be something that would be looking at purchasing land from interested landowners to create a?
Good question. So, first with the town versus, so you can go either way. It could be town-owned, it could be a fire district similar to the way the wastewater system is, both of those options are on the table.
Okay, okay.
Second part of your question, sorry, did you repeat that?
Well, I thought it was kind of all one. It's, it's a matter of identifying, you know, if you're, you're talking about landowners and you identify a place, are we looking to go buy it so that, so that, so that?
Yes, that, that would be part of that, and so if you were to give a landowner who was willing to cooperate, was willing to allow some soil site investigation to be done, and we did come to a, we think there's a solution here, and the town wants to move forward with it, that would be something, um, that, that would be a discussion about actually purchasing the land, and the appraised value of the land would actually be covered under this program, assuming there's still money left when we get to that point. So, the hope is, is that you get far enough along where you do get a solution, and you are willing to move forward, and that there is grant, subsidized money through the same program to be able to buy the property. So the same money that's paying for the study, there's also money available to buy the land associated with the solution.
Okay, Dave?
When you, so, when, when you start talking about the village of Scottney, what do you do? Do you assemble like, let's say, three hundred housing units? What, what is the, what are you trying to, so, and that's much different than the village of Perkinsville, where you might have like one hundred. So, so you're looking at, and when you say land, I'm, I'm assuming that you're talking about a treatment plant. So, it's not like you need like a hundred acres. You, you might need five or ten.
Correct, so.
It's not like.
Step back to the beginning. Um, so, you start with a designated village center, and then thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred and fifty feet outside of that area is this other boundary that is considered part of it. What we do within that area is try to calculate what the given need is right now. If everybody within that circle needed to be on a centralized system, what would that number look like? Fifty thousand gallons a day? That gives us our number to go say, okay, can we find that in one site? Do we need to split that in two sites, one end of town, that sort of thing? And the same thing that's done for Perkinsville, because obviously that's a completely different number than, than what Scottney would be. The treatment plant, um, it, it wouldn't end up being a treatment plant. It would probably end up being what I would call a mini treatment plant with an onsite solution. So we wouldn't have a direct discharge to a river or anything like that. They're looking for onsite solutions. So, tamping up to a large sand filter that then allows you to go and discharge it to the ground at, at a lower strength. So, um, for instance, I know we're up in Highgate. Emily, do we know how big the one in Highgate is? I know I should know that off the top of my head.
I'm pretty sure I don't have the top of my head, to be honest, because there's so many villages right now.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
So, the, the intent of that thirty percent is to look at your specific need now, and then also look at growth potential moving forward. So not just looking at what serves today, but also allowing for that flexibility for growth, um, businesses to come into the village.
So my next question would be, so you've, part of this study will be to investigate where the town could undertake it in the two villages. Does this study also, and I know that the town manager's already done this, reached out to Windsor or Springfield for, for a conversation?
So that is a topic of conversation. What we would have to do is demonstrate that doing that would be cost-effective. A cost-effective solution versus other alternatives. There also gets into, and Emily can speak to this a little bit more than I can, sewer extensions have different eligibility related to that. So, a sewer extension, which is what they would consider a connection to Windsor to be, doesn't have the same subsidies associated with doing what they call a decentralized wastewater system. So they are options, they should be considered to make sure that they are either viable or not viable, but they may not have the same subsidy and financing associated with that, because they consider that a different type of wastewater solution.
So your, one more question.
Sure.
Your, your facility doesn't separate solids, and then like Springfield, I, and I'm not, I've never visited these, but they, I think Cavendish does also. Don't they separate solids and then they try to get the water back to? I guess I wouldn't drink it, but.
Digest the solids.
Yes.
And then it goes in the w- oh.
Okay, so it's not separated, solids are not separated because?
Well, that'd actually be part of the study. So there's a couple of different ways to do that. You could have a sewer collection system, just like, and everything goes to one central location and you deal with everything there. A lot of these village service settings actually have what we call step systems. So it'd be a septic tank and a pump station, and you pump the effluent solid stay on site, or solid stay in the tank. So, the, most likely it would end up being that type of solution, where there would be centralized collection areas for solids, and then you're pumping just the effluent to where the treatment system would be.
Ray?
My understanding is a lot of villages that are treating it just like a housing, a housing group, and it's basically your resident or a residential septic system on steroids.
Uh, for, for Michael.
It's like a septic tank, you know, they got thirty or forty houses in that building community, and they set aside a giant beach field with a septic tank.
Yep, I guess the, the best example I can give is, I think it's Warren. The town of Warren, Emily, that has a step system?
Uh, yes.
London Derrick has.
Uh, London Derrick, well, and London Derrick is doing one of these, these as well. They're actually.
It's not like Ludlow, where you have the septic system on next to the river, and it keeps getting flooded.
Correct.
It's like its own big.
Yeah, they call it a decentralized centralized system. So yeah, think about it like, uh, that's actually a pretty good, uh, uh, regular septic system on steroids. So, everybody kind of has their own tank, pumps, pump, pump station, or it might be shared in some case with a centralized force main that goes out to wherever it's supposed to be.
The P U D. How, how far along is this now?
Uh, so we, we've just started, so we're between the zero to thirty percent right now. Like I said, I'm, I'm hoping that within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to come to you guys and schedule a meeting to sit down and discuss the thirty percent. That will also be a point in time where we give Emily the document as well. So we'll sit down, Emily will have her questions and comments, you guys will have your questions and comments. We'll come back and take that and start going from thirty to sixty. So I think that's one, one question for the board tonight, is whether they want that as part of their normal meetings. Do you want to have separate meetings? Do you want to have a subcommittee report back to you? All of those are options, it does not matter us which way you do it. It's a matter of not affecting the rest of the town business when you have long meetings.
Regular meeting?
I think this needs to be posted on the website as well, because we've had a lot of interested parties in dealing with this topic, so we don't want to be caught saying, how come you didn't invite me, or something like that. It's a good idea.
I, I encourage that as well.
Yes.
Can I give a suggestion here? A lot of the villages I'm working with, they have a wastewater committee that's working on this and then reports back to the select board. And they have, you know, part of the public outreach is having a website dedicated to the project to show interest, to provide information. Sorry, I have another meeting here starting in two minutes. And, um, so that would be what I'm seeing. The most successful projects are ones that have a committee that reports back to, to you guys.
And I would also throw out there, feel free to pass my contact information along to anybody who has questions. We will, we will answer whatever questions that we, we get, we will report back to you guys about the questions that we're getting from the public as well, but I would encourage as much public participation as possible.
Okay, so my first question becomes, um, the creation of a committee. Your thirty, sixty, ninety reports would go to the committee or come to us?
They would go to the committee, and then the committee would report out to you. So whether you want that report shared and their comments shared, that's really why this is, this is a local decision more so than a procedural one.
How's the board want to proceed with that?
I think we should talk about it, maybe advertise to see what, gauge what the public thinks, whether or not people want to attend meetings, or, I don't know the answer.
Half the time, it's hard finding people. I, I, I agree with Dave and want to put it out there, but I'm not going to hold my breath that it's going to be. And then what, do you want five, do you want seven?
I don't know.
You know?
This is new.
The, the other side of it for me is, is if, you know, everything they talk about goes to a committee, and the committee comes to us, do we get all of what we, he gave them, or do we get part of it?
Yeah.
It means we need to be at those meetings anyway, Ray?
In our situation, if you're going to do a committee, it'd be beneficial to do a Scottney committee and a Perkinsville committee, because there's a lot of people in Perkinsville, and it only affects them, and they are passionate about it.
Maybe it's better to keep it centralized. John DeForest, any ideas on this?
I, I agree with Ray on that one. For, for discussion purposes, each community, each community has got its own perspective.
Okay.
It'd be great if you could bring it together, but I.
And there's also the possibility that one's system will go and the other one won't, so.
Yeah, but.
It's all coming back to you anyway.
It's all coming back here anyways, regardless of what.
Again, get a local perspective if you're going to be. You can get a local perspective if you'd like.
I just agree with Dave on the fact that we just need to just get it out to community people and see what, what they have their interest in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you guys decide not to do a committee and wanna have additional public meetings outside of this forum and separately, that, that's not a problem for us. We'll, we'll work for you guys.
I, I heard something that, you know, piqued my interest in that, that's what, what Emily said and that is that successful projects have committees. You know, well, why, why reinvent the wheel?
I'm getting that too.
Um, so, so, let's start getting that out there. Um, get the public notices out there. Um, and I, I suppose we'll start looking at probably committing, creating two committees, one for Perkinsville and one for Ascotney. Um, that's not gonna happen tonight, uh, but, but I think that would be our discussion moving forward at this point for us.
And so, I, I think then in that case, um, the decision will be whether you wanna have the thirty percent meeting, the full board and then do the committees? Or you want us to wait to have the thirty percent meetings?
I would, I would say, you're, you're gonna, you said you're gonna have that done in a few weeks, right?
I think so, yeah.
We're not gonna be able to have.
And that might actually be a good breakpoint at that point to, to do that. Cause the thirty percent is really just kinda what's existing and what the need is. And then breaking out from there and really looking at solutions as per the overall village.
So, that one would happen here and, and, and that might be a good place for us to invite the people to, to come in and start to see what's going on.
And see what the interest is from.
Yes, no, you're fine.
And then, and then to see what the interest is from, um, both villages. As far as creating a committee.
Well, we have a lot of committees right now and they could start spreading the word, cause most of them could be on another committee.
I have another meeting over here, I have questions. Um, I'm always available by email, phone. If you guys have further questions about the funding aspects of this, I saw that ARPA was on there, but I'm not sure if it's related to ARPA from a village, just one perspective. Are you real or ARPA?
No, it, no, it's different. Uh, Brandon, you have all the contact information for these, these people?
Of course, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
And they'll be on the agenda in two weeks roughly? Uh, they're, they're gonna notify you, maybe it's two weeks, maybe it's four weeks.
Yeah, I would say.
We'll, we'll reach out by email.
Whatever you guys work out, it's fine.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, ARPA discussion. Um, do we have a list now?
I have.
What page?
Uh, it's fifty-seven of seventy-eight.
Thank you. Fifty-seven of seventy-eight with numbers. Now, what does that add up to? Does it have a total that that adds up to?
Hopefully it'll add up to a hundred percent.
Yeah, it adds up to, uh, hu- a hundred percent of the remaining funding.
Oh, it does, okay.
Sorry, Mike, you, you logged that up, I had to.
Uh, done this, there you go. Uh, a- any discussion on this, uh, this is open for discussion for anybody.
So, the first box is kind of proposed, right? Obviously proposed expenses. That's just sort of what you've put together with the money that's left.
Correct.
Okay. From, in, 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 obviously for people to know, we've had some public meetings on this, um, with some turnout. And then our, our own comments from the select board, obviously.
John DeForest, are you familiar with any of this that we're, we're talking about?
Do we have, do you have any list for these folks?
Do we, do we have a copy that we, go ahead, John.
One that didn't make it on the list, I'm sorry I didn't get the name of Perkinsville. Uh, when it was a town manager, the plan was to work on going in security in the building and.
That's on the list.
It's on the list.
It is on the list?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That work plan was developed, so, and it, it's a pretty good idea to have, to be able to control the access and rest of the folks.
Um, thi- this is a, a, a list for us to look at. This isn't a committed list at this point. Um, um, I, I guess I'd like to see this thing distributed somewhat. Is it, is it up online for people to see?
This is the first time it's been, I didn't wanna release it online before it came here.
Okay. But, but, I mean, we're not, we're not, you know, like voting on any of this stuff here tonight. Um, it, it's just on here for discussion. Uh, uh, any discussion on this list? The lower list, the second list is the stuff that we've already done.
Yeah.
Top is what the committee has come up with or ideas to present.
Correct. So, so the proposed expense list here is Hoyington Field, seventy thousand dollars. Uh, tree maintenance, fifteen thousand. Uh, posts, uh, Veterans Park, uh, these are, is there along the road, correct?
So, the post that announced the meth turbine install.
Okay, thirty thousand dollars. Martin Memorial Hall Drainage Project, twenty thousand dollars. Trails, seventeen thousand five hundred. Uh, mapping scenic views, fifteen thousand. Digitalization of the town clerk's, uh, records, twenty-five thousand. Martin Memorial Hall Paving Project, twenty-eight thousand. Uh, Fire Department Training Stipends, twenty thousand. Uh, welcome, Town Welcome Signs, forty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Those are some big signs. Uh, Martin Memorial Hall Electricity Improvements, thirty-five thousand. Security System Martin Memorial Hall, seventy-five hundred dollars. Virtual Meeting Improvements, ten thousand dollars. Town Garage Generator, forty-five thousand dollars. And digital, digital, digitat- digi- that was not coming out. Digitalization of Land Use Records, twenty-five thousand dollars. And this, I, I believe you said is gonna add up to a hundred percent of what's left.
Yes, slightly around seventy thousand dollars more than what we have. But through a combination of, um, potentially like reserves, like Martin Memorial Hall Paving, if we decide to do that, there's a Martin Memorial Hall Reserve. Same thing with parks and recs, so through a combination of funding sources and potentially grants. Um, once the board decides which way it wants to go with some of these things, then we'll also apply for grants.
The, the first thing I would like to, to, for, for me, to, in a minute. The first thing I'd like to, for me, that I would like the board to consider is, and this is just my opinion, but like Martin Memorial Hall Drainage Project. If, if we don't do something with the drainage, you know, I mean, we, we put the money under the roof, but you've gotta, you, you've gotta solve the drainage problem along the side in this building. It's, you, you've gotta put money into buildings. Uh, uh, I, I, what I'm getting at is prioritizing things o- o- on, on a level more of need than want to start with. Uh, we need to, there's some things we need to take care of that'll, you know, like the roof. We took care of that, it's good for the next twenty or thirty years. That's gonna be good for, hopefully forever, once we fix it. That's just, and that's what I'd like to hear from, from, from the, the board members. Anybody else that's, that's interested in giving us any feedback. But, but that's what I think has to be, happen first is, is the prioritization of needs over wants and, and, and try to get through that. Go ahead, Paul.
You wanna go next or do you want me?
Well, I had a quick question. Uh, uh, um, Brandon just said something that's really confusing because he said that these numbers are also in com- did I hear that right? That these numbers here on this chart are in combination with some reserve funds?
No.
Okay, good. Because that was really gonna throw a curve.
What that had to do with grants?
The question was, can we fund every single one of these proposals? And I said, if, I said, we could, but we would have to combine it with, like for the Martin Memorial Hall Paving, we could do some from reserves from, some from ARPA. They all add up to four hundred and six thousand two hundred dollars.
See, that's really not where I wanna be. Where I wanna be is, tell me what equals three hundred and thirty-seven, seven eighty-seven? Because I do not wanna mix reserve funds with these numbers that are in front of us.
And, uh, uh, hang on, Paul, one second. This list was not created to be all accomplished. We have three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, seven, uh, three hundred and thirty-seven, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So, it, when you go through a priorit- prioritization of need and want, e- everything rises to the top and there's gonna be some stuff at the bottom that just, you don't have money for it.
But this is misleading because kind of it doesn't say that it's throwing some out of reserves when he just.
Well, we're not, it's not supposed to, Dave.
The question was, can we fund all of these? It wasn't with ARPA. Can we fund all these with ARPA? No.
Yeah, but, yeah, but the beginning says R E ARPA. Read at the top of our sheet, ARPA proposals. It doesn't say combination ARPA reserve accounts.
But that's, the question, Dave, was can we fund these? It wasn't, can we fund these with ARPA?
Well, let me, let me fix that question. The, the question is, what can we fund with ARPA? And it's not gonna be this entire list.
Right.
Maybe that answers it better.
So, I, I do have a question and I'm probably gonna make some people angry here, but.
Go ahead.
Uh, personally, one, I'm not gonna, I can't vote on anything, not that we're gonna vote right now, but I can't vote on anything like Hoyington Field, nine percent, seventy thousand dollars. I don't know what we're doing to it. I need to see a detailed list because I'm gonna tell you right now personally, I'm probably gonna say, you're not gonna get all seventy thousand. So, we're gonna pick out of some stuff what's needed. That's just me. At least, that's my opinion. Um, that's why we have a board to vote. Um, Town Welcome Signs, forty-three thousand dollars. Well, how, there's enough people here that they need to see a sign to.
It was a suggestion to clarify all the wooden signs we have around town. We have to replace the wooden sign and all the other things and other people doing, uh, that's what the suggestion was and you got a price and that's what you're trying to do. Quite something.
And we have several lots of signs.
Yeah, I.
They're not plugged with a, with a, with a, with a, with a room signs that are already out there if they were talking about or listening.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I like spending money on stuff that's gonna help somehow fixing a roof, fixing a road, fixing a culvert, fixing a ditch, putting money into a bridge.
Just put them on there so you get the price.
No, no, I get that.
Yeah, these came from public meetings.
I, no, I totally get it. I totally get it. That's why I said I'm probably gonna piss some people off. I, I'm just, I just, I'm just saying, my opinion as a voting person up here, that's what I'm looking at. Cause I'm looking at how we benefit everything and, and personally as a resident here. I don't care whether the sign looks good there or not. I mean, as long as it's not broken down like some, I'd sooner just take the sign off. You're gonna figure it out when you get in here, I mean.
I, I think people are just gonna be happy that they made the list and there's actually discussions and not making the list, that's the point.
Now, if you wanted to take like a main one.
I, I agree.
Or something that comes in. But, but like I said, that's why I wanna see where, like how many signs is that then? So, to me, like, I don't know, is that ten thousand a sign for four signs and then, that, that's what I'm saying. This is great to have, but I think we're gonna have to break it out. And I'm sorry, Brandon, if I'm, I, you did say, this is the first time, this is the very first year. It's really easy to throw, throw rocks at it and I apologize. I'm just saying, those are the things I'm gonna wanna get into more, is just to see where the money's going.
Well, here's what I'm doing, I'm breaking it out right now. Uh, uh, and I've got posts and for lack of knowledge, I was li- doing it while I was listening. Tree maintenance, what is the tree ma- maintenance for?
All town properties, there's a list of trees that you can cut and prune, all town property that maybe you can't seem to get a bunch of money to do. It's gonna be kind of a huge debt to get all that money at once.
Safety line.
So, a tree's a word.
Okay, so, so, all right, so that's, that kind of fits where I'm going. Most everything I'm doing here is some sort of maintenance or upkeep to something we already own that sooner or later we're gonna have to do.
A tree maintenance system going, like at Center Grove, the Village Green, what's in the field. And any town property that needs shot in the arm to get trees gotten rid of or replaced or taken care of, that's the shot in the arm.
So, so I've got posts, which is the Veterans Park. Um, because that's.
Is there a question about that?
Sure.
Um, does that mean all the way around the green or just, I mean, cause the town doesn't own all of the green.
Ray, can you answer that?
I don't know where they come from.
The proposal was to replace the post after Village Green, the town maintains the entire green.
The town does not own the entire green.
The town, the town maintains the entire green.
That may be so, but we don't own it all.
So, so what are you saying that we wouldn't?
I'm just curious, are you gonna replace it on land if the town doesn't own?
We own a lot of town land that we don't own. We have trees, we prune everything.
Who owns the posts that are there now?
They're not owned to land.
We have a survey in the town office that shows the town portion and the churches portion.
Okay.
We do not own the entire green.
So, there was a discussion in historical records that stated that when the town office was there, the church said that if you guys maintain the entire park, the electric system in our church. And so, that was the agreement, I don't know if it's worked or didn't.
Sold. You have that, the town office now, there's all sold private now. So, that's, you're going back a long way.
Right.
Okay, okay.
But the danger in the post replacement is if you, if you do a few, then it's gonna look stupid.
I'm just asking, are you doing it with the intent to do all of it?
So, it's a lot of posts.
Yeah, and again, I'm sorry, Brandon, over throwing stones at it, but we're, just thank you for putting it together and I, again, I think we all, I, we just need to absorb some of it. First time I saw it.
Well, I think we have to ask questions exactly like we are now, which is, okay, if we don't own all of it, are we gonna replace them all? Do we need to get permission from whoever owns the other property?
Veterans Park is only that tip of the, the green. And that, that portion is through a process, was established, was owned by the town. We have to go through quite a process in order to put that park and monument and all of that to prove we own it.
Yeah, I remember, cause the king was part of that.
Quickly indeed. It was the, it was England.
Yeah.
It was very strange, yes, it was. It was very strange. Oh, yeah, I would wanna nail that up. Chip copper, mad and horned at me.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I did exactly what you just said. I, I really wanted that to be mounted on town property so no one else would have to dis- discover that it wasn't on town property.
Nobody knew who owned it.
Yes. And it got divided now. It is property of the church. We do share. We, the, the electric comes from the church, the meter.
And we pay two hundred dollars a year for that electric.
Right, it's co-mingled.
But there is a survey that shows where the line is between what the town officially owns and what the rest of it belongs to the church.
Yes. I have another question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, um, I know it's not on this list, but, but I wanna consider this. Um, since we just found out information from the grand list. And since it's good business where the grand list lowered and the taxes went up two and a half cents, very unexpected in one day. Um, and since I went to V L C T about trying to mix, um, things, not only on spending. Um, I see a extremely rough budget year coming up. And the title of this, uh, money is American Rescue Plan Act, which was to not just have new ideas, but to actually spend money on things that you already did that will help you. I'm gonna suggest that we look at potentially paying off the grader. Um, that would be a shot in the arm, uh, for highway. Or I, I would suggest that we look at the long-term debt, whatever that is, I don't know what it is. And that we use a portion of this to help ourselves. If the interest rate is, I don't think the town can borrow money right now for less than four and a half. Uh, the numbers of things are rising, uh, for the cost of equipment. Um, I fully well think that we could prepay debt and that would cover an ARPA expense.
Well, let me, let me, let me go right and tag right onto the end of that. So, the list I made was posts, which may end up being a discussion. It was thirty thousand dollars. Martin Memorial Hall Drainage was twenty thousand. I think that's gonna be more than that. Uh, Martin Memorial Hall Paving is twenty-eight thousand. Martin Memorial Hall Electric Upgrades, thirty-five thousand. Security System Martin Memorial Hall, seventy-five hundred dollars. Virtual Meetings, ten thousand. Town Garage Generator and Trees. For a total of one hundred ninety thousand five hundred dollars. And that leaves one hundred forty-seven, two eighty-seven. How much do we owe on the grader?
I'll have to confirm tomorrow.
So, so, so let me ask you.
You already, you already had on payments in the grader, you did five payments, you pay, this would be our fourth one this year. So, we have one more year, sixteen thousand dollars.
I didn't know about all of it, but I just think it's, I, I'd like to look at whatever we owe as a town.
Yeah, the long-term debt schedule, I'll have that at the next day.
You say sixteen thousand, we owe on that one?
I think we have this year, then one more payment, sixteen, so thirty-two thousand total, but this would carry a budget.
Yeah.
Cause we made double payments.
We made a, in fact, we had a last year with one minutes.
So, I, I would like to consider us just keep focused on the ARPA money. So, when you just, whoever just totaled up nearly, whatever the number was, I didn't do it in my head, but I'm sure that you came up with like eighty thousand dollars just for Martin Hall. I know I read the minutes of the Martin Hall trustees the other day, they had a meeting, they wanna allocate ninety-nine, ninety-nine to get under the ten thousand dollar threshold, to have, hire an engineer to study the drainage. I don't want to take out, I don't want to take out money from the reserve accounts if, because all, we're just gonna have to replenish that.
Right.
ARPA funds cannot go in reserve accounts.
That's correct.
So, I think that we should coordinate with whatever these people are doing with trying to spend money, uh, so that we're funding it with ARPA money.
And, and, and most everything that was in my list for the hundred ninety thousand dollars was e- was either a repair or an upgrade that.
I'm not disagreeing with the need for this, cause we just spent a lot of money on this down here.
Right. Right.
We just saw the generator outside.
But your number is closer, it's, it's closer to a hundred thousand dollars on, on Martin Memorial Hall.
But I just, I, I don't want that money to be taken out of reserves, 'cause we're just gonna have to put it back in there for the future.
I agree.
So, the money for the Martin Memorial Hall trustees are gonna vote?
I looked at the minutes.
No, but they're gonna vote our money?
No, I think, I think they were gonna come to ask to pull out ten grand, because it's under the purchasing threshold, out of reserve accounts-
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
For an engineering study for the drainage.
Yes.
I don't think we need to do that, 'cause we're all on the same page.
Right.
So, Paul, according to the reserve account language that was voted in for the Martin Memorial Hall reserve, that's the first step in order to spend that money, is to pay the Martin Memorial Hall Board of Trustees recommendation, so.
But, but I don't wanna spend that reserve account, because we can't put it back with ARPA money, I'd rather hire the engineer and dig the ditch with the ARPA money.
When you guys, you know, I agree with you, a hundred percent, that's what I was getting at.
I, I guess, I do, I do too, I, yeah.
So, that's what I've been waiting upon in order to move forward with the engineering, so is the board okay with me spending up to ten thousand for an engineer out of ARPA?
But you put an RFP out, right?
Yep.
That's the first step.
Yep.
And, and this is for the drainage project?
It would be an RFQ according to the purchasing policy.
If you need a, if you need a motion for that, then maybe put it on the next agenda, or-
Well, he can do the RFPs.
Yeah, that's one-
We'll just handle the RFPs when they come in.
And then I'll have the result.
They have a leak out here in the hallway, too.
It's all, it's all connected.
Thought we had new roof.
You have a leak, weird?
Right out here, when you go through the doorway.
Yep.
Coming down that light fixture, right across the thingy, and right down the wall, coming down both sides.
Excellent.
Was the other night when I was here for that zoning and planning meeting.
That's what the wires are for, right? They chase down with electricity.
Yeah, I said, yeah, well, I said, we'll wait till that light goes.
No, it's good to know.
Lisa said she knew about it, so, 'cause Lisa was here at that meeting.
I see.
I'd like to hear about the Hoytington Field dollar amount that's been allocated, so what would that do? I'm with you, Paul, so I would, I would like to know, learn whether that's actually building something or studying something. Studying something on all of these topics doesn't really work for me, because it's not really getting something done, but the biggest bang for the buck, because it, what it alludes to is, we'd have to spend money in another source that got studied, and studies sometimes stay on shelves. The second thing would be, is there anything on this list that would cause a recurrence of that dollar amount to resurface through the budget process? That's a big deal.
And, and that would be something we'd have to look at with like mapping, digitalization, you know, is, are these, some's gonna complete those projects, or, or not?
Or training, that's gonna resurface.
Yes.
We say, okay, we know that all of a sudden, in FY twenty-five or six, we can't pull the plug, so I don't know the answer, but, but on this list, what will generate, number one, actually something getting done, not studying, and number two, not reoccurring subsequent costs?
If I can, like, on that training, I thought you'd mentioned a few times that training for everything is free, right?
Yeah, they are.
So, what's the money for?
Time.
Oh, they're timed to go do it, oh, oh, not for the classes?
As, as it's stated.
Oh, 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 gotcha, travel time, okay.
Or, I mean, I, I don't know how to go about this, maybe that is titled, maybe it's titled wrong, there are other towns that have on-call, they have cer- they have certain dollar amounts that are allocated to that, and maybe it's time to talk about that, I don't know the answer for everything, so maybe that's the wrong title on this, but my point is, the ARPA funds will be gone when tax money will have to come into play.
Go ahead, Ethan.
No, just the, the tree thing, if we do it, is this something that has to be regular maintenance? We do it this year, we'll have to do it again next year in order to keep up with it, right?
This is, this is to get the land share done, just a shot in the arm, and then you can have a smaller amount in the budget set aside and just keep up with it.
Gotcha, yeah.
And Hoytington Field project is a design, community involvement, and you end up with a blueprint at the end of it that we can use to get grants through the government and wherever else. That's what Hoyt, you know, it's the same thing that came to you with one hundred and thirty, we got a net now of seven. It's the same as, like you said, you don't wanna spend reserve accounts to do the design here, I don't wanna spend reserve accounts at Hoytington Field to do the design here.
Mapping scenic views, I, I would almost think that might be something we can land a grant on through Mark to get done. You, you know what I mean?
I would talk about that.
Yeah, more often than not, that, that's where that happens.
Yeah, and I think, if I can, I think first and foremost-
It would be part of the town plan.
Right, but first and foremost, before we map them, we need to understand what they are, we already have like seven in, in there, but we have, what we've talked about at the planning commission and going forward, is trying to put together a definition of what defines a scenic view, just 'cause, you know, something that you have is a scenic view, I might look at and go, that's not as important to me as it might be to you, or whatever, so it's putting together that, and we've had some presentations on, on how people do that, and how other towns do that, and so that we can have our criteria, not saying we're gonna take any off that we already have, but there's other people that have wanted more on there, and do the ones that we have fit that.
But, but I don't see that kinda mapping as being something for ARPA, because I do see that as being something that'll come through a grant in support of the town plan and zoning bylaws.
And that's, and that's later, after we figure out how to define what they are.
I'd like to find out, Brandon, if you could, what the level of the record for either the town clerk or land use would bring that to, so I see that there's a certain dollar amount there.
Fifty thousand dollars.
No, 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 I get that, but what?
How much is it? Another five percent of the records or all of them?
Measure, where would that bring it to?
Yes.
Does it only get a little bit? Does it get a lot? I don't really know.
Our goal is to have everything, and I think we've all decided that, and that's a real nice thing to go look at all that out.
Correct.
Where's the generator for the old schoolhouse on here?
It's not there.
It's not there, you, you guys already made a motion to give Brendan and I the authority to go do something with that.
Yeah.
We haven't done it yet.
Oh, okay.
The generator for the town garage came in significantly higher than what the board approved, and that was the cheaper option of the two options.
Did we miss out on a special deal or something that month or something?
No, we just, the board approved an amount of money without us obtaining an estimate.
Gotcha.
Is there a, I mean, I get our emails all the time for something like homeland security, you don't think that'll qualify for anything like that?
Definitely.
I think that the, the fire departments did that, and that, so the, the cost would not be anywhere near that amount.
It would probably be, end up being something similar to what we did here, a fifty percent match, that's what happened at Martin Memorial Hall, so we can shoot for VM, VEM and C, but if I write the application, I just need to know that we have fifty percent that the town has committed.
Obviously, the price to get the generator for the town garage, just one vendor.
Yep.
Okay. So, we got some, we, we, you know, we got some progress on this, some stuff to chew on, John or DeForest, anything you wanna add to this?
I just wanted to clarify, I could put my statement out stupidly, when the item says to put huge posts around the Veterans Park, my head automatically went to, we only own, Veterans Park is only the southern tip of the green, is that really what you mean, or do you mean you wanna put them all, was that suggestion to put them all the way around the park?
I can't answer-
It wasn't meant to be, I, I think it was-
The forms, what?
I, I think what I was, what I was kinda told was that it was to do all of them, and it was because the concrete gets destroyed, and so-
Oh, no, it's a good idea, lovely.
The idea was beautiful, when the fence went around the whole park and all that, but when I hear the Veterans Park, you're gonna put new posts around the Veterans Park, that's only the southern tip of the green, and, and I'm thinking, why would you put it around that little section? Would you not put it around the whole park?
Well, this, this came out of committee, so I, I really don't know.
You're supposed to replace all the posts of the entire Village Green park, it was written in the statements, the Veterans Park.
Just don't call it the Veterans Park, 'cause the park is only the southern end of it.
Okay, and, and make sure we get permission from the other landowners, as need be.
It's not gonna be a problem, but we, we don't own that.
Yeah, okay.
I, I put that back to mind.
So, I'm assuming that was to, to curtail maintenance, was the idea was to do the grant posts, was so that we wouldn't have to continue to maintain?
They're gonna have to be replaced sooner or later, some, I, I mean, if you're gonna have them, or they're just-
The old forms, what's left of them, Harry Temple used to do it, he passed away, and we inherited the forms, so right now, you make a couple of little extra posts, and you work in a form, and you have, you know, make them one at a time.
I think it's gonna be a bigger project than people think, because the first thing you do, they pull the posts up, you're gonna say, we want new change, we don't want new change, we want it to look old, watch.
It always, it always does.
It always, a little bit escalates up to a little more than-
Now-
Huh?
I think it's a reasonable thing, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know about that.
Now, refresh my memory, Dave, maybe you remember this, have we actually committed the money to the hookup for the gas here, for, for the generator?
No, we were wait, still waiting on that.
So, that needs to be on this list as well.
There's a little confusion about-
It's supposed to be seventy-five hundred in the budget for it, Brandon's gonna answer that.
We're, we're talking about connecting the gas tank to the existing generator we put in here.
I wanted to answer it without you telling them what it was.
Yeah, so that, we haven't moved the fifteen thousand dollars out of the ARPA approval, which was, I think, thirty thousand, so we're just waiting for the estimates from the-
So, we have already taken action on that, and, and committed that, then?
Yeah, two.
Okay, that was my question.
I think it's another fourteen, fourteen or fifteen thousand that we have, but I also, it's, if we put the propane tank and bury it in, in the back by the shed, then, then we pave, so we're, there's a couple of moving pieces, and we-
No, we wanna do that before we pave.
Exactly. Or are we gonna-
We're gonna wait until after.
Yeah.
Or are we gonna upgrade the propane tank and have it sitting next to the building where it currently is, so that will, that would be on the next agenda then.
John, you got any recommendations on that?
Well, we talked about burying the tank, no, we have, oh, it's making it one system. At one time, I had a verbal ballpark figure from Eastern, I think it was eight thousand dollars, so I don't know where, would, would we get one price from Irving?
Yeah, I have a couple of estimates upstairs, one for to do it each way, it'll be on the next agenda, on August, on August seventh, I was gonna put it on this agenda, but it already seemed a little full, so.
You don't wanna dump ground tank, it'll look like crap, plus they have to be bigger because you gotta think, or else it'll like-
If you wanna dump ground tankers, you want it sitting down under Falls River in the field, so. That's eight quarters.
They came from Love though. So, in that, in that case, we're not gonna be able to bury it right next to the-
Wait a minute, I'm not done with Ray, is there anything in it? Sorry, but, no, you're, you're, you're all right.
So, we can talk about that.
Next, at, at the next meeting?
So-
Yeah, and we're still the ARPA stuff, right?
We, we are, yeah.
And one of the things that we had talked about, at, at, at least you and I had a, a quick little conversation of fire control, just ARPA money, 'cause we were worried about all the farmers and everybody in our town too, we weren't sure if there was anything with any of this that could help with any relief from what's just happened.
We, we-
With the storm, 'cause it just, I mean, we were standing out in the rain, so it was just very candid.
If you look at the second chart here, we did twelve thousand dollars in small business grants before, and, you know, we do have an emergency situation, I, I, I mean, we know Dave got, you know, clobbered with this thing, but it's not just Dave.
It's not just Dave, it's-
There's, you know, there's-
And the thing is, is Dave knows more, I, I don't know this, but-
I thought, like, I know I've been getting a lot of stuff on the water and stuff, that right now FEMA's involved, and they're telling people to get their information in, and they can show that it's pertaining to this storm, that they're responding, because we think they, I think they have a lot of notifications and paperwork on, on keeping track of your, like, whether it's wells, or, or anything that's been damaged due to-
And I'm sure Dave knows all, all about what he needs to, to do, and probably who else out there that runs a firm.
Well, yeah, and I got a little bit, everybody needs a little loan, you know, FEMA is out right now, they came today or something, and then, not to me, but they're out, and SBA, they want you to sign a thirty-year, four percent loan, I don't wanna take loans out, I'm not gonna do that, so, I don't know, it, it's evolving, so there are different segments of it, if you have trash on land, meaning trees, or, I'm sure it'll be a segment, so you either have light, medium, or heavy, and then they'll allocate so many dollars per acre to clean that up. I had, I don't even know how much, thousands of yards of sand came up on the top of Upper Falls again, that'll be a different segment, I don't know who's gonna take that up, and during Irene, that, I got a grant from SRDC, Springfield Regional Development to, to handle that, that was HUD, that generally comes several years after the event, everything is slow, so.
That's what I was getting at, was, you know, the people's crops are gone.
That's, that, so that's the initial stage, so they're telling us right now, there's all kinds of emails from the Vermont Department of Agriculture, saying that hay is now, they want you to go test it, it's not hard to figure out that whatever happened up in Love though, like, came down on me, and you can just go in the field right now, and it's getting dry, I know this sounds really stupid, but we need some rain to wash it off, and it is septic, you can, you can smell, and it has a lot of dirt up on the, up on the field, so there's the, there's the trash issue, then there's the crop issue, and I joked with the, the head of, I'm very close friends to the head, he hauls all the milk in the northeast for Dairy Farmers of America, today I was on the phone with him, and I said, the thing that, what people don't get is, they can give us all the money they want to, but cows don't eat money, so, either the corn or hay, it's, it's kind of a big deal, 'cause I've seen some pictures up north of big farms, completely flat on, on the field, so I don't know what's gonna happen.
Ray?
There was an email sent out just recently to all towns to alert your citizens that there is money to do trapping in your driveways, damage to your house, your basement, whatever, and they did release all that, because the governor's letter was accepted by the president, another letter went out last week for ag, and they're working on that, and trying to get a declaration for that, I hope that's happening.
Okay.
They already did for Windsor County, it's in, so I think, what, how many counties are in Vermont, John, ten or twelve?
All of them.
Vermont, I think there's- But they're not all declared emergency yet, 'cause I saw the map on Channel Three and Channel Five.
Is it fourteen?
By county, isn't it?
Yes, it's by county.
I thought it's, he, the letter he wrote that I read, an email was for the state to declare-
Oh, no, they want the state, but, but-
Ag emergency.
Yeah, but it's not yet.
Isn't it fourteen, Joe, counties?
Pardon me?
Isn't it fourteen county?
Yeah.
I think.
It could be three and a half, it could get left out, but FEMA hasn't even really started their work, and that's where it's gonna trigger off.
How many farms do we have in Weathersfield, Dave? Do you recall?
But there's all classification now, you have vegetables, you have other people doing But there's all classification now. You have vegetables, you have other people doing other things. I know up on, I think it was Upper Falls, there was a guy with literally 50 beehives. They're gone.
Gone.
So and another thing that says nothing to do with it, the flooding event, you've got an apple orchard that lost its entire crop.
Yeah, because of the frost.
Gone.
Yes. Yeah, wow.
Or strawberries.
And then I saw Willis Wood, so he.
He would be making jelly.
No cider.
That's right.
Exactly. So there's a large thing going on all over.
And I think I see this morning that Georgia lost all its peaches.
That was the same this spring.
Uh, theirs, I think theirs was heat. Went the other way. They had too much heat and they've lost they've lost their crop down there.
Global warming. Can we get on?
Yes.
I want to get home.
Um, yeah, uh, we we've got quite a bit here to chew on, and we can rearrange and and kind of start working into a a list of priorities and needs and stuff. Again, we're not voting on any of this right now, and and then we might not the next time. But we'll just get it, try to try to get it organized as much as we can and keep moving forward with it. So we do want to get that stuff allocated. Next up, I I, let me see, where am I here?
We have an appointment.
That's what I thought. I I just wanted to make sure.
Motion for patient viewers for the boxing rep committee.
Second.
Any any discussion?
I have one discussion. It's not about the person. It's about the the form. I thought we were going to get rid of some of the stuff on this form.
Uh, she she would, she has the old form.
Okay, well, let's make sure that that's not available or out there.
Yeah.
Please, and thank you. So.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, yeah, hearing no further discussion on the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. I have one other quick question about appointments. It says listers, one vacancy. So we have two listers already?
No, we don't. We have, I haven't updated that since.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, update that, please.
Uh, approve the warrants?
All right, I'll make a motion and approve the warrant for July 17, 2023. For general fund payroll, $17,552.31. Operating expense, $30,329.23. Highway payroll is $9,093.68. Operating expense, $21,775.33. Solid waste management payroll, $1,710.86. And operating expense, $19,631.97. Library, we're going to do payroll for $2,307.70. An operating expense, $800. Police e-ticket grant, $503.43. For grant total, payroll is $30,664.55. An operating expense of $73,039.96.
Do you want your second?
Yes.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the warrants?
Yes.
Go.
Of course, you know, it's always me. On page three or four of the general fund, about midway down, not even midway, right under the MVP, what is the New England Forestry Construction?
New England Forestry Consultant is the Land Use Administrator's Contracted Services.
Oh, okay. And spring cleanup?
Yep.
Is there a reason why we wait until July to pay for spring cleanup? Did he not submit the bills or right on the same page on the bottom? TJ Property Management?
So this is something that happens on generally a monthly basis. So it was, the description is probably off. It should just be.
Just clean up?
Yeah, general landscaping and maintenance. I'll have that corrected.
Okay.
Sorry, that is a little confusing.
And I got one more on the payroll, page one of one. It's under Deb Hanley. Why was her pay so big?
And that's on payroll?
Yep. She got paid $1,733.18 when she usually gets paid around 700.
She was counting that, though. Counting on you not seeing that.
So the.
Just kidding.
So in payroll, she was, Olivia, you know the answer to this? I don't know. Okay, I'm going to try the best that I can. It was, we withheld too much from her paycheck for a number of months, and the treasurer caught it. And we were reimbursing her for the for the difference.
So it was a correction?
It was a correction in her pay. That was.
Probably, probably. Probably would have been smarter to run her paycheck and then have that as a correction.
Yeah, separate. That's all I had.
Any other, any other questions? Here, none in favor of approving the warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other business can be conducted?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Paul. I'll lay you first.
It was actually for items for future agenda, but we don't have that, so I'm going to use any other business if I can.
Yep.
Is that okay? During a planning commission meeting, at a hearing we had, we were, or I was informed about the water tanks that we have at at different buildings, different places here in town, like the church, the school, and so on and so forth. And it was indicated that the town has a right of way and access to those over people's properties, and that's part of what happens. And and they, so they can access it, and then they they, or the town has ownership of the top.
They have.
The head. And then there was a question about, well, who owns the tank? What if the tank fails? Do these people even know this? Is there something in the deed? I I'd like to know, I'd like to know how that works.
Doesn't that go through land use or something or whatever or something? Some, there's going to be some papers, right? Or if there isn't, there should be.
Well, that's my point.
But it's through the fire department.
Yeah, I I gotta say, this might be more through the fire department.
Yeah, I don't, I just, I, it came up. I didn't have the answer, and I wanted to ask more directly. Maybe you can.
Yeah.
If the board's okay, I just, I think, because if it's the town, then we have an obligation in a right of way, or we have, do we fix it? Is that, you know, how do we own part of a tank and not the whole tank? And and then is that water able to be used everywhere else? Does the person own the tank and there can say no to the wa- I don't know.
Yeah, let me look into that, and I'll provide an update in my town manager report in the next.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Don't spend a lot of time, but thank you.
And did you have something, Brendan?
I do. So as, a few years ago, we received some funding from the state of Vermont to build a tenny tree memorial at the Scutney Park and Ride. The tree was cut down after an arborist determined that it was unhealthy and the state deemed it a public health hazard. That tenny maple tree was transported to Christian Hubner, and then after he turned it into boards, it went to Rockledge Farms Woodworks. And of the wood, tenny memorials were distributed to the remaining tenny family. It was also, a piece of the wood was also carved into chessboards. And a chessboard, chessboards are completed. The library board of trustees have it on their agenda for Thursday to receive one of those chessboards. So if anybody's interested in attending that meeting, it'd be pretty cool. I have that chessboard upstairs, if anybody's interested in seeing what it looks like.
Anything else under other business?
I got one thing.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't know if it needs to be on an agenda for next time or not. We, a little while back, we did a town manager evaluation results.
Yep.
Did we ever get any back?
We 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 do. Paul has.
Yeah, we we got them back.
Okay.
We did, we did kind of a, yeah, I kind of correlated, or I correlated everything. Mike did too, and then we just, Brandon has asked for that, so I had, you guys, I figured you guys would put on a agenda thing or whatever you want to talk about when we have some time, I guess.
I'm I'm ready when you are, I guess.
Is that what you, is that how, I guess.
I'm just curious.
No, but is that how the board wants to do it?
Does the board want to meet to discuss the evaluations before we, you know?
I don't know. You tell us.
I I mean, the what we have comes up with a number. It's an evaluation number that would be presented to him. And I plan on giving him all of the copies so he can see all, you know, all the entire, all of the sheets. And the and the summary sheet that I did.
Yeah, I did a summary sheet next to it based on.
So he basically get a list with two summary sheets, and yeah, he probably way outdid me.
Anyway.
Um, so does the board want us to meet and talk about that, or or you want to just give it to Brandon and want us to just sit down with Brandon and go over it? What do you want to do? We'll do it together? I'm I'm fine with it either way.
Just brought it up. I just know that it's been sitting out there, so.
Yeah, and it should be, and we need to, we need to. Okay. So Paul and I, Paul and I will get together and sit down with Brandon and go over it, and then we'll report back to you.
Move adjourned. Second?
Aye.
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 Thank you. You're tired.
No, you don't get it every day.
What?
Do I have, do I have to spank you?
David, you going to that?
So when do you take this time off?